I now call the Monday, February 10th, 2020 meeting of the Prescott Valley Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. At this time, I would like you to all stand. We're going to stand for the invocation led by Commissioner Gary Roberts, then the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Vice Chair Rankin. But before we go to Commissioner Roberts, it is my sad duty to report that Commissioner Rick Duskey passed away last week. And so I'd ask that you'd all please nod your heads in a moment of silence in memory of Rick Duskey. Thank you. Rick served his country, and he served this town for many, many years, and we just really greatly appreciate his service, and he will be sorely missed. Commissioner Roberts?
Thank you. Dear Lord, give us the wisdom and eyes that we need to make decisions. May we be with the Duskey family, give them peace and comfort as well. We thank you in Jesus's name, amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Item number four on the agenda is roll call.
Chairperson Zercher?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Here.
Commissioner Yader?
Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Musara?
Here.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Here.
Item number five, approval of minutes from the January 13th, 2020 meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I so move.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Minutes pass. Item number six, announcements. Good evening. My name is Matt Zercher. I'm the chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'll be presiding over this commission, the commission's deliberations on hearing items this evening. The Planning and Zoning Commission sits in an advisory capacity to the Town Council and reviews planning and zoning issues and forwards recommendations regarding these important issues to the council. The Commission is bound by specific regulations and guidelines for considering applications, and there are also surprising things the Commission cannot take into consideration when reviewing an application. Finally, members of the Commission are volunteers. We are not paid employees. We donate our time for the betterment of the town. This evening's proceedings will be conducted using the following format. First, I will read the hearing application to the record. Once the application has been read into the record, staff will present the case and the recommendations to the Commission. Members of the Planning and Zoning Commission will then direct any questions they have regarding the application to staff. After the Commission completes its initial review of the application, the applicant will have an opportunity to comment regarding the matter and answer any questions. After the applicant has completed their comments, we'll open the floor to general comments from the public regarding the current application being discussed. We'll read the rules for public participation as we get closer to the public hearing. Also, if the Commission does not have any objections, I would like to move zoning ordinance amendment, which is item number five under public hearing, so zoning ordinance amendment 20-001, which is item number five under public hearing, to item number two under public hearing. That way, we can hear those next to each other. Any objection? All right, so...
I do have one announcement with your permission.
Go for it, sir.
Mr. Duskey's services will be held Monday, coincidentally, President's Day at the VA Cemetery. They have an amphitheater there, and it's going to be at 3:00 PM Monday afternoon. Hope it's a beautiful day.
Thank you. So item number seven is public hearing items. Public hearing item number one is general plan amendment 20-001. Upon the application of the Town of Prescott Valley Community Development Department, a request to adopt a minor amendment to the Town's General Plan 2025 amending Chapter 11, General Plan Administration to Add An Additional Criterion By Which A Major Amendment May Be Determined. Presenting this evening is Richard Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Commission. You have before you a proposed amendment to the Town's General Plan. Chapter 11 is the basis for administration of that plan. As the Director of Community Development, I'm responsible for administering the general plan processes to include determining what is a major or minor amendment. Staff received indication that there was an initiative process moving forward several weeks ago to ask for an initiative to be presented to the voters in, excuse me, in the Town of Prescott Valley for the purpose of making a similar amendment that's proposed now by staff. The amendment creates a petition process that, if it's followed and satisfied, requires this body to consider a minor plan amendment, a major plan amendment. The consequences of those changes are few. First is the major plan amendment. If petitions are received by the Town Council and verified, then the matter comes back to you as a major amendment. At that point in time, the procedures set out for major amendments, which is the same process that we actually adopted, the Town's General Plan, requires two hearings on the matter in two different locations within the Town of Prescott Valley. Then it, once forwarded to the Town Council, has to be done by a two-thirds majority of the Town Council. There still is the opportunity to appeal processes to Superior Court if somebody feels necessary in terms of process. Because the cost of a vote, a special election potentially, we believe is prohibitive, and we'd rather spend that money on other things in the Town of Prescott Valley, staff has elected to bring this proposal forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and with your recommendation, will carry it forward to the Town Council. Based on the circumstances and what I believe are minimal impacts of the proposed amendment, staff would recommend approval as drafted and would respond to any questions you may have regarding its content or effect on your processes as a Planning and Zoning Commissioner or the Town Council in considering future amendments to the Town's General Plan.
Are there any questions of the Commission, staff? Okay. Seeing no questions from the Commission, we'll go ahead and open the floor to public comment. Let me read the rules for public participation first. So due to the lengthy agenda we have this evening, we'll be strictly adhering to our three-minute-per-speaker rule. Upon the conclusion of three minutes, please promptly finish your remarks. If you wish to comment, please remember that you may only comment on the application being discussed, not on any other issue. Please direct your pertinent comments to the Commission through the chairperson, not to the applicant, staffer, or individuals within the audience. Please keep your comments brief and to the point. Please try not to repeat what others have already said. Speakers cannot donate their time to another speaker. Comments or outbursts from members of the audience are not permitted, and you're only allowed to speak once on the topic. Before we begin, I do want to acknowledge that we received emails in support of this, and want to thank those who spent the time to craft those emails and send them to Town Staff, which then forwarded them to the Commission. Those were all in favor of this general plan amendment. So right now, I'm actually curious, do we have anybody that wants to speak in opposition to this general plan amendment? So seeing none in opposition, we'd like to invite anybody who wants to speak in favor to come up to the podium. Please spell your name for the record. You'll have three minutes. Go for it.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, for the record, my name is Rob Essen. That's E for Echo, S for Sierra, S for Sierra, O for Oscar, N for November.
Go ahead and speak a little bit clearly, more into the mic.
Certainly. I'm a resident of Pronghorn Ranch. I chair a citizens committee within our community dealing specifically with zoning issues, and I'm also the chair of the newly-formed Citizens Voice Political Action Committee. I would like to thank the mayor, Kel Palguta, and Town Manager Larry Tarkowski for their efforts to work with the community to ensure that every voice is heard. The change you have before you tonight is a result of that effort, and we ask for your support. As we launched a signature gathering on January 7 of this year, we didn't realize the level of support we would garner and that collecting close to a couple of thousand signatures would be accomplished in short order. We surpassed our goal this past weekend. We discovered that other communities, other than just Pronghorn Ranch, seek input into the changes that impact their communities. We ask for the support of the PNC Commission, and we're hopeful that the full Town Council will approve the change when it meets in March. If you were to have any questions, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone have any questions? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name's Philip Delaney, D-E-L-A-N-E-Y. I just heard about this tonight, but coming from a government background, it really is unpleasant to hear, and pardon if I've hurt anybody's feelings, one bureaucrat say that another bureaucrat has the authority to make big decisions in our community without talking to the community and say that it's because there's not enough money to put on a ballot to get the opinion of the people who are the taxpayers. So it just doesn't make sense to me to hear someone say that it costs too much money to get the opinion of the people who are going to be affected. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
I'm Dennis Royalty, R-O-Y-A-L-T-Y, resident of Pronghorn Ranch for the last three and a half years. So sorry about Commissioner Duskey. Just three quick points to make. First, I'd like to share my experience as a volunteer obtaining signatures for this initiative petition. I didn't go door-to-door, instead I just sat behind a sign. The sign was like a magnet. I met many, 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 many fine people, a bunch in the audience, from across Prescott Valley. We all share a desire for orderly development in the community that we call home. That's why so many of us are here. If it ever seems to you like there's apathy in PV, that's a mirage. We care, and there's a whole big bunch of us. As a graduate of the Citizens Academy, I vividly recall Larry Tarkowski and department heads urging community involvement. I'm sure in the important roles you play for Prescott Valley, you do get some citizen feedback, but it also must be easy for you to be drowned in development proposals and paperwork. So we're here to do what the town asked us to do at the academy. Please listen to our feedback from this petition drive. It sounds like we're heading this way. Richard, I'm delighted to hear your positive recommendation. If a developer is proud of how he or she will impact Prescott Valley, then that developer should stand up to careful public scrutiny. Answer our questions in a transparent way. Show us why your project won't adversely affect the community as a whole or a portion of the community. If a developer resists careful scrutiny, shouldn't that set off alarm bells? So that brings me to my final point, which is just simply, the proposal before you is not terribly long or complex. It's supported by town leadership, respects the people you serve, so please recommend approval of the measure this evening so the council can make it a policy for our hometown. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? All right, hearing done, I'll close the public hearing for general plan 20-001 and bring it back to the Commission. Is there a motion to forward the matter to Town Council with recognition of approval of the amendments?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we forward GPA 20-001 to the Town Council with a recommendation for approval of the amendment.
I'll second it. Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Musara?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zercher?
Yes. So item number two on our agenda this evening is zoning ordinance amendment 20-001. Upon the request of the Town of Prescott Valley Community Development Department, a zoning ordinance amendment to Article 13-23 Sign Regulations and Chapter 13 Zoning Regarding Standards For Electronic Information Message Boards, Banners, and Flags. Presenting is Richard Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This amendment was brought forward based on an enforcement action and discussion thereabouts, as well as discussions we've had with folks over the course of the last couple of years since we amended last the sign code. The specific regulations or clarifications as to administration of the sign code, they also consider electronic signage, and I'll go into some specifics. Fernando Gonzalez, our code enforcement supervisor is here because he administers the code every day. I was telling ARDA Commissioner Rutherford on the way over, I had to spend some time reading it this afternoon because I don't routinely sit and read the sign code for a good time. We were approached some time ago by McDonald's here locally and were asked to consider electronic menu boards. Electronic menu boards, ironically, I think a couple of you were on the Planning and Zoning Commission, I believe Charlie was, when we considered electronic signage in the Town of Prescott Valley. And we set about to do so, developed very stringent and, in some instances, creative ordinances to be able to address this new technology. And we came forward to the Town Council, bringing with it a mixed message from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that was the Planning and Zoning Commission didn't want to introduce electronic signage. So we had a joint session. Everybody got together. One of the councilpersons said, "Well, Richard, never mind." And so we went away and didn't address electronic signage, with the exception of specific area plans that were approved under PADs, and those are the areas in the entertainment districts specifically for the event complex, as well as the sign on the highway. So we left it alone, and then we discovered that newer technologies were being put in place for electronic menu boards that could be changed very easily as opposed to static multiple boards, and it very quickly became apparent that by doing so, we were actually minimizing the footprint of those menu boards or signs as opposed to necessarily increasing their sophistication. So we've considered and we're bringing forward a recommendation that we approve electronic signage for that purpose. We believe that it is a good housekeeping matter. The other is, the Town Council was approached by the Veterans Administration and others here locally about placing veterans, active veterans and previous veterans banners and names on posts in downtown or areas where we have banner installations on streetlights. And although a banner is prohibited on private property, we were asked to develop specific standards for placement of those banners on or in public right-of-way for the intended purpose of advertising people's service to the United States of America. That's included in the amendment under banners or signage. Under flags, we had received complaints about the way the Town Code was written to prohibit, actually exempt, flags from regulation if they displayed a national symbol, the United States flag, Arizona flag, or something like that. We find that folks would like to fly other than just the American flag, and so we looked at other jurisdictions throughout the state, some in the southwest United States as well. We found a mixed bag. In Arizona, it's all over the place. Some still regulate it as the town previously regulated it. Others have no regulation like Yavapai County. We elected to come forward with a balancing proposal, and that is to allow up to 45 square feet of flags as a sign on private property. That could be broken into a variety of signs. We find typically a flag is three by five, so in that instance, you would be able to have three flags flown on the flagpole. We did continue forward with regulation of flagpoles because they have potentially risk to people if they were to fall if they weren't placed properly. So we have put limitations on the height, no greater than 24 feet or the peak of the roof of the house. Also placement as it relates to public right-of-way, so in the event that they were to collapse, they would not collapse into a right-of-way. We've addressed comments in temporary signage, which provides sandwich boards, also temporary signage for open houses, were previously addressed as part of the Town Code, where people can place signs over a three-day duration of an open house. We also amended insignificantly, but to clarify, how we regulate signage based on a Supreme Court ruling that came out of Chandler versus Reed. And that court case was significant because it went all the way up to the Supreme Court, and it specifies that a municipality such as the Town of Prescott Valley cannot regulate signage based on the content of the sign, but rather need to regulate it based on square footage. So that's the basis that we have modified our changes and included in the purpose of the sign code based on that monumental sign action. The ordinance also creates requirements regarding the illumination of electronic signage, how a message would change, the duration of the message, all those things which are supported by industry standards that are also included in your packet, but that are also replicated in the ordinance and will be in the Town Code once approved by the Town Council. With that, I've given you a pretty short overview. I've had an opportunity to talk with many of you on the Planning and Zoning Commission in preparation of this meeting, and, Mr. Chairman, I would assist in responding to any questions that the public may have regarding this proposed amendment. And I'm pleased to be joined by Fernando Gonzalez because he is a wizard with a sign code. With that, I'll conclude.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
Just one, Mr. Parker. On the private property flagpoles, is there a limit as to one pole per property?
Correct. Any other questions?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to comment about the great job that you did putting this together.
Well, again, we're trying to balance people's fears and people's expectations with something that works. You know, a lot of people think worst-case scenario, we don't try to draft ordinances that way, but rather try to draft them to be practical because I don't want to interface with more people than we already do from a code compliance standpoint. And so we're trying to do a balancing act. We took this very seriously when we brought it forward and have studied it for many, many months, Commissioner Musara, to bring you these recommendations.
Richard, I just had a few clarifying questions with regard to the flag code. So currently, just hypothetical situation, so currently, US flag, state flags, any government-recognized flag is allowed under code, correct?
That's correct.
But, for instance, a "Don't Tread on Me" flag, rainbow flag, Tree City flag, those would not be currently allowed under the existing code?
They would not be. However, under the proposed changes, they would be.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions of staff?
I would think, just to forestall some objections, it should be noted that political signs are governed by other statutes.
Political signs regarding supporting a campaign of somebody who's running for any position politically or regulated by state law, and that is the duration prior to the primary that one can fly their support for that candidate. I had an opportunity to talk with somebody regarding a Trump flag. Somebody could fly a Trump flag. That signifies support of the President of the United States. But Trump 2020 should be put away until it is appropriate to express your opinion regarding supporting that presidential candidate. So that would correspond to state law, and it's yet a few months out before that would be appropriate, but that would be appropriate at that time because it is a political statement, and as prescribed by state law, it is appropriate.
And then, just for clarification, does the state consider a flag a sign?
Yeah, I had an opportunity to talk with a legal scholar just recently who looked it up for me, and yes, they consider a flag a sign by state statutes.
Any other questions of staff of the Commission? All right.
Thank you.
Hearing done, we'll open the floor to public comment. With regard to this issue, questions, we can have questions addressed after a public hearing of staff, so we will go ahead and do our best to kind of notate your questions, but at this time, we'll open the floor to public comment. Again, please spell your last name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and I'll echo the sentiment of how sorry we are for the loss of your coworker and companion. My name is Phil Whitehead, W-H-I-T-E-H-E-A-D. I'm a retired law enforcement officer, former soldier in the United States Army, and currently the commander of American Legion Post 140. But I'm also a 30-plus-year resident of this community and a local businessman. So as such, what I've seen over the years are a growing number of people that at least have an opinion on things and are willing to express it, good, bad, or indifferent. The oath that people such as myself and a great number of people that are in this room today, the oath that we swore was to uphold and defend the entire Constitution of the United States, including the First Amendment. And freedom of speech regarding flying a flag or any type of flag should have the same protection as to the people that decide they want to burn the American flag. And a discussion of this type tends to throw myself and others into that frame of mind where if burning a flag is a freedom of speech-protected expression, but flying a certain flag isn't, that creates a quandary for me. And so I hope that the council and this committee address this in a common sense manner, and you look at all sides of the issue. I understand the 2020 on the flag being a political statement, and that's something that is probably easily absorbed by those of us that have a certain political persuasion. I'm going to stay out of that publicly right now, but the fact that at least there is consideration given to expanding those abilities to express oneself is a very positive thing, in my opinion, and I want to thank the council for looking into this and looking at expanding that ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Well, good evening, Commissioners. I want to also offer my condolences to Rick Duskey. And my name is Randy Hayes. That's R-A-N-D-Y-H-A-Y-E-S. I'm here because I'm a little bit concerned about the 2011 Arizona revised statutes of Title 33 property. It's 33-1808, Version 2, flags displays, political signs, caution signs, et cetera. It says in here that notwithstanding any provision in the community documents, an association I presume you're meaning, an HOA in that provision, is that right, Chairman?
I'll have that answered afterward, but yeah.
All right. Shall not prohibit the outdoor front yard or backyard displays of any of the following. Now, the American flag... Now, the American flag, on the next paragraph, says it is an official or replica of a flag of the United States Army, Navy, Air Force, Marine Corps, and Coast Guard, and association of that member's property if that flag or military flag is displayed in a manner that's consistent with the federal flag code. Those other additional flag codes that you list here are POW, MIA flags, the Arizona State Flag, the Arizona Indian National Flag, and the Gadsden Flag. Nowhere does it mention anything about political flags. Now, I'm a firm believer in freedom of speech as well as anybody else, but I think we need to have some sort of a ballot initiative to vote on something like this, don't you? Instead of you guys making the decision for us? So because I'm wondering if it's appropriate for me to fly a flag like this in front of my house.
Actually—
Okay, can you see it? Sorry. It's only one way. But if you can fly the Trump flag, then I should be able to fly this flag. Okay? It's freedom of speech, right? All for freedom of speech. That's all I have to say about it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Please note outbursts from the audience.
My name is Nancy Scharf, S-C-H-A-R-F-F. The council's proposal to change this article regarding the displays of banners, lighted signs, et cetera, could cause unintended consequences. The ordinance, as it currently stands, helps preserve the natural beauty of our residential areas and prevent them from becoming overrun by unsightly displays. If political banners are displayed in the name of the First Amendment, then the rules must be applied uniformly and not just at the convenience or whim of the current administration. This proposal, if adopted, could open the door to displays of Confederate flags, Nazi KKK, and other extremist groups in addition to political ads. This would be detrimental to the attractiveness of a community and would serve to drive potential home buyers away. No one wants to pay a premium to buy a house surrounded by signs of any nature. The display of any political sign and banner should be restricted to the last 45 to 60 days before the election, and they should be removed within two weeks after the election. They should only be visible within the immediate vicinity of the home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
My name is Jaclyn Desar. That's D like David, E S like Sam, A. I moved here in 2006 to be part of an HOA which has codes regarding signs in yards, and we have been able to maintain a very well-run, courteous, friendly community, people who get on well with each other despite differences in beliefs, politically, religiously, or any other. The current codes we have had have worked very well to enforce these guidelines. In accordance with Arizona Revised Statute 33-1808, an association may regulate the size and number of political signs that may be placed on a member's property if the association's regulation is no more restrictive than any applicable city, town, or county ordinance that regulates the size and number of political signs on residential property. Political sign means a sign that attempts to influence the outcome of an election. Any sign, banner, or flag that has the name of someone on a political ballot falls under election campaigning and is not permitted except in the prescribed length of time, 60 days before an election, and must be removed 15 days after. So that's what I have to say. Please review these changes and consider the implications later. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on, Mr. Parker wants to just add some clarifying comments.
Just the issue, I think, is relevant about homeowners' associations. Homeowners' associations are private agreements, private covenants and regulations formed for a subdivision administered by somebody other than the town. So if they are more restrictive and regard placement of signs, flags, and so forth, through civil courts, they can be enforced. So this change doesn't have any effect on any homeowner's association's rules or conduct. Likewise, the town can't enforce private deed restrictions or covenants that are joined into by private individuals when they buy a piece of property in a subdivision or planned area development. So these regulations, as they're drafted, will not have an effect on those areas. Those areas can be regulated through the homeowners' association without regard to the town standard.
Thank you.
May I pass these sheets to the—
Please.
One copy each of the—please, thank you for each of them. Thank you.
My name is Paula Burr, B-U-R-R. Chairmen, zircheers, and commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'd like to offer you my sincere condolences. Rights of individuals must always be balanced against the rights of the community as a whole. For example, I have the right to play my rock music very loud, but not so loud that it disturbs my neighbors. I also have the right to own private property, but I don't have the right to have a pig farm in my neighborhood. That's why we have town codes and ordinances, to ensure that we can all live in harmony and that our town is a beautiful place to live and gives off a well-maintained appearance that will attract business. These proposed changes to the sign code, specifically the flags, will actually detract from the harmony and beauty of our town. Codes must be written so that they address the extremes in our community. Most people will be reasonable, but some people will not. My concern is that these rules are so broadly written that they could open a Pandora's box, making our town look like a circus, reducing our property values, and impinging on the rights of our neighbors. For example, under these codes, people could fly three flags. Those could be three, what we consider, normal-sized flags. It could be three 1-by-15-foot flags. It could be one huge 9-by-5 flag. All of those would be permissible. And I don't think that's what the intention is, neither the size nor, I would hope, the Flags are extremely invasive. They flap, they snap, they stand higher than people's fences, they can be seen from blocks away. It makes sense to be cautious how, when, and where we allow flags, and all signage for that matter, if we are to maintain the beauty and harmony of our town. I urge the commission to send this back to a work study to tighten up the language and think through possible unintended consequences. The Supreme Court ruling that is referenced in this packet has been in place since 2015. The town code made changes in 2000, the town made changes in 2016, and didn't see at that time the need for such drastic changes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My sincere condolences for the loss of your commissioner. I feel really bad about that. My name is Isabel Cetecedes, and my name is on file. Richard kind of alluded to this, is there are some flag poles that I know that Prescott Valley issues the okay for people to go ahead and permit them to do that. However, there are—not everyone is following that rule. Christie has some photos that were taken recently of some flag poles that would fall into the right-of-way, would fall into the street. There are some by construction zones. And my concern is, I have a granddaughter who's going to be driving pretty soon. She's got her permit. She comes to visit me. And when you say you can put any sort of a flag, hand it out, and it's hard for you to anticipate what the color would be, what the language is going to be on that, it does become very confusing. And I think it creates a danger, and I think it also creates a liability for the town. So that's something really important to think about. The other thing I want to talk about is that the proposal that is in here equates the American flag as a piece of cloth and a sign. It doesn't represent the true symbol of what it represents, which is the body of Americans. And some veterans who have served and gave it their all and gave their lives, I think, would find this unpatriotic and disrespectful to our United States flag. And there are US flag codes, and there's also Arizona state law that talks about what you should and shouldn't put under a United States flag. So I hope you'll give that a lot of thought. Also, in 2016, the town addressed the Reed versus Gilbert ruling and agreed to, and I quote, "enact provisions to regulate the time, size, and manner of all signs within the town boundaries," end quote. To say now that the existing code is not up to date is kind of disingenuous. There has been no further Supreme Court rulings. Governments can and do place reasonable time, size, and manner restrictions on flags, banners, and signs, as long as they are content-neutral. If the town so chose to, they could even say, "No signs at all." So if you do implement this with a 45-square-foot flag on one flagpole, or even three flags on a flagpole, it's going to change the landscape of our community. And I think there's going to be a lot of negativity in the neighborhood. The aesthetic desirability is going to be destroyed. And it's also going to negatively affect our property values. Those flags and banners become worn, ripped, they fade, and they eventually become eyesores and blight.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Hello, council. Hello, audience. I heard someone speak earlier about expectations. I am all for the First Amendment. I really don't care what party affiliation a person has. Doesn't matter to me. My expectations are that the town of Prescott Valley, Department of Code Enforcement, enforce the codes, enforce the penalties. I do not see this happening. I can say this confidently because I've been watching this for quite some time. I've seen political flags on polls over a year. I've made complaints. I do not see the enforcement happening. So whatever the resolution of today's hearing is, I simply would like it to be enforced. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Carol Sherman, and I'd like to ask if I could have someone read my statement I came through with—
Please do. I was going to—
Bill Larrangetis.
Go ahead and speak into the microphone, though.
Hello, my name is Rex Tolman, T-O-L-M-A-N. I'm speaking for—
Thank you.
Carolyn Sherman. So, just reading a statement here. I am in support of the Prescott Valley residents' ability to fly Trump flag at their private residence without fines. My understanding is that the violation occurs under Town Code 1323-0060. When looking at Town Code, I ran across the following under exceptions. 1323-050, flags, pennants, and insignias of any national, state, or other political unit. It would appear that exception would include flags supporting a branch of government. I do agree with limiting campaign signs on public property in the code because they can be burdenly and unsightly. This is a matter of private property, not under an HOA contract. I would like to also point out that the Trump Make America Great Again flag and the Trump 45th President of the United States flags are not campaign flags. They do not say anything about election, but only showing the people's support of a sitting president. If upon review of existing code language, the Planning and Zoning Office needs to propose some language changes to allow for our residents to exercise their First Amendment rights without violating Town Code, then I am in favor of updating and changing the Town Code to allow for that.
Thank you very much. Please get well.
Hi, I'm Steve Silvernale, S-I-L-V-E-R-N-A-L-E. Hi, Matt.
Steve.
You either have freedom or you don't. You want to restrict somebody else's right to do whatever they want to do, you're restricting your own. Give that some thought. Inso much that you're talking about a sign code, I would suggest that you include some kind of language for the sale of advertising on benches and/or bus stops, since you're already doing it. I think pretty soon we're going to have a transit system. It'd probably be a good idea to look at it now, as long as you're looking at it. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Randall Erickson, E-R-I-C-K-S-O-N. I've lived across the country, in California for 15 years, Pennsylvania for 13 years, and here for 35 years. I've raised my family here. I've had a business here for 35 years, raised two kids that have five Arizona degrees. And in all of my areas that I've lived in, I've never seen anyone's name on a flag. And this is from Eisenhower to now. This is about the flag with Trump on it. Even though it doesn't say 2016, 2020, we all are aware it's a political situation. I've never seen the division that is occurring now in this country or anywhere. It's been pretty well-spread across, more in the middle, but things are so far apart now, it's a very uncomfortable situation. And for me, I don't really want to see it everywhere. We've all had—there's always been issues that we all have disagreed with, issues that we've agreed with, never agreed with all of them all the time. So being that this is specifically about a flag that has Trump on it, I looked up that there are 45,871 people in Prescott Valley. Of that, the majority is Republican, we'll say, right. But 36.7% in the last five presidential elections voted Democrat in Prescott Valley. So that means that there are 16,813 people that probably did not vote for Trump. Of all the population, 38% are families. So that means there's at least 6,388 families that probably did not vote for Trump. And I just can't believe how volatile things are. We need to come together. This is the United States, not the divided states. So, American flag, flying the highest, that's great. That's what we are. That's what we are. The state flag below that, great. Some other flags I would not object to. But for a person's name to be on the flag, and it is obviously political, is absurd. It's in your face. We don't need this situation any worse than it is. So we need to come together and not allow, as one person was saying, you'd be opening up the door to, like they said, a Nazi flag, KKK, who knows what. So let's just leave it the way it is and just, let's just have a nice town. Thank you.
Okay, folks, thank you.
Bob Ogden, O-G-D-E-N. I received my notification for a flag on December 19, 2019. It was very, the notification was not very clear, so I called the code enforcement and talked to him about it.
Go ahead and speak a little closer to the microphone, sir.
Beg pardon?
Go ahead and a little closer to the microphone.
Talked to the code enforcement and asked him just specifically what it was. And he informed me that because it was a political sign that said 2020 Trump, that I was to remove it, and it wasn't allowed to be 60 days prior to an election. So, being that I was unclear, I called him up the next day and he says, "So what can I do? If I put this flag in my garage and open my garage door, is it legal?" He says, "I can't do anything about your garage." My problem with the situation we're in right now, our country is divided. A lot of hostility in this country. I served in the Air Force, 1964 to 68. That flag's my flag. I believe in that flag. And I believe in my right to have my feelings heard, and my voice heard, and my opinions heard. If I'm flying 10 flags up there, that would be an issue. This is my president. Whether some of us don't think he's your president, he is my president. And I feel I have the right to voice my opinion, like I'm doing now, to stand up for what I think is right. If there's a problem with that, we can have an issue. But I love my country. This is what I'm here for. I also ask, has this council already made up its mind on this resolution?
No, sir.
Okay. Just wanted to hear.
My name is Carol Thurman, T-H-U-R-M-A-N. And my comments have nothing to do with signs, banners, or anything else. My comments are concerning the sound system in this building. Most of the people that, or all of the people that are coming up here to talk have their backs to the audience, because they're addressing you. However, because of the outdated sound system, the audience cannot hear what the participant standing here is talking about. So I would greatly appreciate it...
Folks, and I gotta stop you, ma'am. This is not with regard to this item on the agenda. So we appreciate your comments, but this has nothing to do with the item at hand.
Well, please update your system.
My name is Sharon Skowronek, S-K-O-W-R-O-N-E-K. You know, we share our, in a country that shows a lot of division. And it doesn't, it shouldn't matter whether it's the majority or the minority of people who are speaking up about what the divisions are and to state our opinions. And it's upsetting to me to hear, to me, that flag represents every citizen in our country. I don't care whether they vote or don't vote, if they're small kids, if they're adults, if they're as old as I am. We respect that flag. And saying that doesn't mean that I don't have opinions. They may be with the majority. They may be with the minority. But my understanding has always been, from the time I was small, that our country represents everybody. If you're going to start allowing signs to have names, they clearly have to represent either the majority or the minority. That makes it unfair to the people who are either in the majority or in the minority on that statement. I would like to see that we can continue to respect the flag that so many people have given their lives for and not turn it into a political circus.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rick Deming, D-E-M-I-N-G. I'm a Navy veteran, probably more to the point, I'm a retired city manager, and I've actually dealt with this in a number of cities...
Go ahead and speak a little bit...
I've actually dealt with this in a number of cities that I've worked for. When people complain about things are political, this is America. They're supposed to be political. We're not subjects, we're citizens. And we're able to express our political opinions, whatever they are. There's a couple of, I came to support the flag thing, not necessarily the Trump thing, but his ability to express his beliefs. A couple of things that people have said or have come up that may change my attitude a little bit. One is, I don't understand this 45 square feet. Could you literally have one 45-square-foot flag? I'm not sure that's the intent. But it seemed, that's what I heard, and maybe I just got it wrong. The second one is the time date, where it's a problem apparently being an actual, the 2020 part of the thing, that part. Actually, that, I'm sure the intent of that was yard signs, because people put them up and then they're there for months and everything. That's part of the flag. I mean, I'm kind of going back and forth. There's a certain level of reasonableness to that, of the time limitation, which I think could be solved by just taping over the 2020 and still have your sign supporting your particular candidate. But I think you're on real shaky ground anytime you're limiting people's ability to express their political views. That's what the, you know, that's what the whole Constitution is about. We can do that. Thank you.
Chairman Zercher, members of the Commission, Sandy Griffiths, G-R-I-F-F-I-S, Yavapai County Contractors Association, representing several of my business members that are partners in the town of Prescott Valley, and then as a citizen that lives in Prescott Valley. I thoroughly read zoning ordinance 20-001, page by page. I have discovered many inconsistencies and clarification challenges for sections. Some items are stated in one section, and they are stated entirely different in another section. I feel that it would be advantageous for the Commission to send this sign ordinance back to town staff, and we possibly put together workshops, maybe one or two workshops that involve and engage the business community to make this sign ordinance applicable, make it beneficial, and make it an outstanding sign ordinance that represents the people and the businesses in your town. One point I do want to call out, and it's a quick one, is that in the ordinance that was drafted, it calls out Section 13-20-010 for definitions. Definitions is really 020. So that's just one of the inconsistencies. There are multiple. So thank you for letting me speak tonight, and I look forward to assisting with any town engagement that I can to make this sign ordinance really a great one. So thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, for your record, the name is Rod Jarvis, J-A-R-V-I-S. I'm here representing McDonald's. You heard at the beginning of the presentation by Mr. Parker that we had approached staff with regard to electronic signage. The effect of the electronic signage part of this ordinance will be actually to reduce, as Mr. Parker pointed out, reduce the overall signage just on the site, because you can use an electronic board to change the menu rather than having to have four big boards up so everybody can see every possible food item they might order. So it will reduce overall signage and signage impact. Furthermore, you currently allow this kind of signage, as long as it's attached to the building. And the McDonald's that you have down here, right out on the main thoroughfare, has two drive-throughs, and they're separated from the building so that you have landscaping and other aesthetic qualities to the building. Therefore, the, one of those boards on the building wouldn't do the job. And so we needed to be able to have those be freestanding. But the restrictions that staff has suggested in the ordinance, I think, will handle this kind of signage very, very well with the overall square footage limitations, which we entirely support. With regard to Ms. Griffiths' suggestion of delaying this, I would suggest there's plenty of time between this hearing and the council hearing for Ms. Griffiths and anyone else to come in and work with staff on particular nuances that need to be corrected, while the basic idea of the ordinance itself could be recommended by the Commission this evening. If you have any questions, me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Appreciate you coming this evening. Any questions of the Commission?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Jarvis?
Hi, my name is Austin Silvernale, S-I-L-V-E-R-N-A-L-E. And I think that we should be able to fly a sign that says, like, if there's an election for Board of Supervisors or something like that, that we should be able to fly a sign that elects somebody. I mean, so people can get their name out there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Steve Stoner. I didn't expect...
Go ahead and spell your last name for the record, sir.
Oh, S-T-O-N-E-R. Steven. I didn't expect to speak this evening, so I'm going to keep it really short. The, I've heard discussions regarding the appearance of flags being flown in Prescott Valley. From what I have seen touring Prescott Valley, the neighborhood, wherever, I can only see maybe about, maybe one, possibly 2% of the population flying have flagpoles. And most of them are the American flag and the state flag. Very few, I personally have not seen anything other than the American flag and the state flag, other than POW. My personal view is that if I see a flag or anything that I don't agree with, I ignore it. And I think pretty much everyone should be doing the same thing. I may pray for the individual who are flying that's something that I don't agree with, but it's, I don't see a reason to change anything. But I do have one question, though. Would this ordinance include Christian flags? Yes, it's the same poll, it's in the same category. Little flags, I don't really care about.
I have that written down already, sir.
Okay.
So it's one of the questions I was going to ask in follow-up.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you very much. And my prayers and condolences with you.
Good evening. Steve Carros, C-A-R-O-S, Bronhorn Ranch. I have two clarifications I'd like to seek here. Gentlemen from McDonald's, my concern on the electric signs is, it sounds like a good idea, but my clarification request is, how bright is that going to be? Is that going to go against our low-light thing? So if that has not been considered, I request that it is. And the other is for a clarification. Mr. Zercher, you mentioned the "Don't Tread on Me" flag, and you said you didn't know. And then, it's my own sound system that doesn't hear well. Mr. Parker, he mentioned the Gadsden flag, did he not? Okay, that's the same thing. So I believe that's protected. Okay, that was my clarification on the second point. Thank you.
Carros, C-A-R-O-S. And again, it comes to the illumination, height restriction...
Go ahead and speak a little closer to the microphone.
So low and lumens, so that, again, protecting our night skies so that we don't end up with inability to see the beautiful stars that we have here. Thank you.
Any other comments? So we'll close public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for follow-up. I know there have been a lot of questions asked. We'll invite Mr. Parker up, and then also have Fernando come up, too, because I also have a question with regard to enforcement. But, Richard, you heard some of the questions being asked. Do you want to go straight to answering them, or do you want to...
I'd attempt to answer several of them that came up, so we can kind of clear the deck. As I mentioned previously, private deed restrictions or covenants are not something that are enforced by the town of Prescott Valley. They are done through a homeowner's association and a private contract between the parties. They can be exercised through either Superior Court or, in some instances, small claims. But they are outside of this process. If a homeowner's association is more restrictive, then it's up to them to regulate that aspect of their private restrictions or contract between the parties.
And, Richard, let me just ask a follow-up question. If I'm not mistaken, state law actually kind of oversees a lot of the HOAs, correct? So they would actually be inclined to follow whatever the state says?
And only because I'm curious, I read that stuff, but I don't retain it in my head because I don't live in an area that has a homeowner's association. And again, it's up to people who buy within those subdivisions to administer their own rules. They don't affect in any way the town governance of zoning codes. The United States flag standards, yes, there are standards that talk about the type of flags that are authorized. We've elected, again, to take a more practical view, we believe, we as staff, and that has come up with a standard that is square footage, and let that happen. There were questions regarding flagpoles. If you've ever seen the flagpole that's at the Lamb Chevrolet, that is a very large flag and flagpole. I submit to you that the engineering that's associated with that flagpole is significant, and because of that, it's very expensive. So the likelihood that you would be flying a 45-square-foot flag from a practical standpoint, I think, is not going to happen. I think you're going to see multiple flags because of the engineering standard it would take to demonstrate that that flagpole will stay in place and/or demonstrate that the entire reclining length is on the property and stamped by a registered professional engineer. So yes, in extreme circumstances, it might be 45 square feet. Don't know how long that flagpole will stand, so certainly that requires a building permit where a foundation becomes necessary.
Real quick, just a clarifying question, because we do, I saw this in the code, we're saying three, three-by-five flags, and three-by-five in a residential area is not that giant flag, correct?
That's correct. Three-by-five is a standard flag size. A 45-square-foot would be abnormally large. And again, given the winds we have here, I don't... don't know that it would stand very long. My personal opinion, though, only. The public benches that Steve brought up, we don't have sign codes to permit advertisement on signs in the public right-of-way, whether on a bench or in the public right-of-way. It's prohibited unless it has to do with traffic coordination and so forth.
That is something, though, that can be changed in the future, though, could not?
The staff would actually prefer that we draw the line at the public right-of-way as opposed to mixing things. If they are in private property, there may be an accommodation through a planned area development. If there are walkways outside of the public right-of-way that are sponsored by benches and things like that, that's certainly something we would look at. Case in point, Stoneridge has a lot of walking paths that are outside of the public right-of-way that may be subject to that consideration. The question regarding the brightness of electronic signage, yes, there's a whole portion of the sign code that talks about distances to property boundaries and the illumination value associated with that standard. That comes actually out of a national standard that was published, and we do have a dark sky requirement here in Prescott Valley. In turn, any kind of flagpole lighting has to be shielded and pointed down currently and is not modified by this proposed amendment. Christian flags, yes, would be permitted under the provisions of this ordinance change. You could fly anything. You know, the comment about flying a Confederate flag or a Nazi flag would concern me if I had a neighbor. I probably wouldn't pray for them, I'd probably go over and confront them. But, having said that, that is free speech. And if they choose to do so, I believe that that's the intent of this ordinance, to recognize people's ability to express themselves.
And so, just, again, just a clarification question. So, under the existing code as-is, a Christian flag, Muslim flag, anything like that, is not necessarily permitted, but under this revision, it would be?
That's correct.
Thank you.
If there are other questions you have, in terms of enforcement, the code enforcement staff will administer what comes out of this planning commission and ultimately the town council. Admittedly, we've held off because we've been in the process of drafting things to make sense out of people's expectations. To suggest they're right in the middle of, the code enforcement is right in the middle of debates over what people can do with their property. They deal with that on a daily basis. So, we're trying to protect private property rights where possible, but then also respect and administer the code as it's currently written. I have directed that Fernando and his group stay any actions regarding flags at present because of the action coming before this commission and ultimately the town council upcoming.
Few more questions I just have with regard to some of these flags. So, we're, so, let me talk about a vintage thing. This might bring back memories, Mr. Parker. Stump for Congress. If I flew a stump for Congress flag, would that be allowed under the revised code or not?
It would be, just as flying a political flag would be, it would have to be within the parameters of state law regarding placing your expressions of political favoritism on a piece of property. So, if it were within that time, you bet you could fly a whatever flag for any candidate you chose to do so.
So, Reagan Bush '84, if I flew that flag under the revised code, I'd be able to do so, or is that, would that be?
It wouldn't be timely, for sure, but, you know, I'd have to think about that one. But, you know, in any case, no, that would not be permissible under the town code.
So-
Until which time, again, and I think it's 60 days out, I've slept since I looked at that stuff last time. But, we have taken advantage of changes in state law that enable us to regulate signs in the public right-of-way, meaning signs, political signs, that the state legislature hampered our abilities several years ago. But, there are areas in Prescott Valley where you can put political signs in the public right-of-way, and I'd like to keep that to a limited area if possible.
I have a question on the flags in the, as a veteran myself and someone who flies the American flag, when, if additional flags, whatever they may be, are flown with it, I know as a veteran, I, when my flag starts coming apart, I know it's time for me to replace it. And I've lived in the same house for almost 15 years now, and with the winds we have, I have to replace it quite often. So, my concern is, I think people that fly the American flag are cognizant of that and will change that. My concern is, other flags that would be there, what control does the town have as far as when they kind of wear out their welcome, I'm going to use?
If a sign copy was to deteriorate to a point where it became a nuisance, because pieces may fly off of the sign, I'd take the same kind of position with a flag. If it's deteriorated to a point where it presents liability to surrounding properties' public right-of-way because it's ripping, tearing, and flying off like construction debris that flies around, we would determine to it to be a nuisance. I would think, from a practical standpoint, a code enforcement officer stopping at the place of residence, knocking on the door and say, "Maybe you should do something about your flag," would suffice. But, if we had to, we'd probably take action, yes. Thank you.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes, Fernando. How many signed complaints do you get in residential areas? I mean-
Well, lately, we've had quite a bit more than normally, but I would say between 10 or 15 a month.
Okay. And another thing, too, what about these yard sale signs? I'm not against them being posted, but they don't pick them up?
Well, we-
Oh, you do?
We do. But, that falls within that signage code, that we get the complaints on the yard sale signs that are out in the public right-of-way. They're not supposed to be in the public right-of-way. Our ordinance says they have to be on private property. We do that so that people, in hope that people will come back and collect their signs. If not, then we periodically go out. If there's an address on there, we'll make note with the property owner about their sign, but if not, we generally drive through and pick those up.
Thank you.
And Fernando, while we have you up there-
Sure.
One of the comments that came up was enforcement of codes.
Yes.
Currently, and correct me if I'm wrong, most of the action with the enforcement of codes is citizen-driven, correct?
Not necessarily. We're actually proactive. We go out and do inventories of the town, systematically go through and identify violations of the code. However, we do get a number of complaints, and we go, and we take those actually seriously. We go out within 48 hours to address those issues.
But, pretty much, if a citizen had a complaint, they could call code enforcement, and you would look into it, correct?
Definitely. They can email, they can call us, well, they can call us on the phone, leave us a message. Normally, they're done anonymously, but, yes.
So, I hate to do this to the person, but, okay, so we got a picture here with two flag poles, and it looks very close to potentially a right-of-way. Is that something you would look into and so forth?
If we had the address, we definitely would take a look. We'd make sure that there's a permit for those, and if they are close to the proper line, we'd address those issues, yes.
And, this question could be for you or Richard. Gentlemen, that was up here earlier, that got a citation with regard to a Trump 2020 flag. He had asked about putting it on his garage.
Correct.
So, can you talk to us about that? Because there, because it's not on a flagpole, but it's on a house.
Well, if it's, it depends on the situation.
Okay.
If we go, once we get called to go, I'll take a look at it. We'll look at it. If it's in the garage-
But, in the garage, it's fine, but on the garage door facing outward, that would be-
Where it can be seen from the public right-of-way, we can address it.
But, that would be considered a violation of this revised code?
That is correct.
So, anything with 2020 or the year that specifically someone is running for office, that would be in violation?
That would be considered a political sign, and yes, it would be in violation.
But, some of the, you know, the gentleman that was up here, not my president flag, that would be legal under the revised code, correct? That's not, doesn't say any 2020. So, basically, the year is the thing that's in question, correct?
Because it is a, yeah, it is a candidate year that they're running for reelection, yes.
Do we go into specifics with regard to that in the existing revised code? Meaning, do we put in that language in terms of also, you know, do we go into specifics in terms of what flags are going to be, you know, what government sanctioned flags, what flags? I'm looking for details, I guess. Maybe that's, I think, maybe what we need.
We're not going to regulate, again, the content of the flag, other than, you know, if it is vulgar, if it has profanity, those are prohibited. If it is a political sign, we're going to abide by state law. I think it's 60 days. Yeah, I'm going to go home and get on the computer and look it up again. But, when we have candidates that are running for local offices, as an example, they get a packet that talks about when they can put signs, where they can place signs, and all that kind of stuff, we certainly would endeavor to put forward information from my office if this passes that talks about specifically how you can display flags and that kind of stuff, so that we clear the air, so people are very familiar. I did very much appreciate the speaker's remark about what is it I can do? How can we work this thing out? And I think we have the notoriety of trying to work through issues to try to help people utilize their property within the confines of the town code. So, we would be working to develop that kind of brochure.
So, looking at one of these pictures, we have a United States flag and a Raiders flag, I'm sorry for whoever put that flag up.
Somebody put your flag.
But, that would not be, under the, a Raiders flag right now, under the existing code, would not be allowed, but under the revised code, it would be, correct?
That's correct.
And so, if I wanted to add a, okay, just hypothetical, sorry, Trump, just Trump flag, without the year, I could do it under this revised code?
Correct.
Is there a known candidate?
How about that question? A known candidate for, I mean, it-
Again, if it's stating preference for the person, in that case, I would consider that it's supporting the current president.
Okay.
So, you could have had an Obama, under the current proposed amendment, you could have flown an Obama flag. You could fly a current senator, if you like, that senator. I knew somebody who liked Mr. McCain and flew a flag supporting Mr. McCain shortly after his death. That would be permitted. We didn't get a complaint, we looked the other way.
So, kind of just going, I'm sorry, about the political stuff. So, if we go into kind of our current political season, and someone is running for office, and we just say, someone for that, without the year, would that be legal or not?
Again, if we're going into the political season, as soon as you get in the political season, they can fly that sign that says Trump 2020. As soon as, 60 days, I believe, is the time before the primary, that will be permissible. After the primary, 15 days, excuse me, after the general, 15 days, they can no longer fly that flag. It could say Trump, but it can't say Trump 2020.
Now, do we, do you feel at all that we need to add at all to some of the verbiage, just kind of clarifying things under state law or anything?
I do not.
Okay. Are there any other que-
I thought, just for the comfort of those who are concerned about protection of political speech, Richard did point out that we are bound by state law. And if you want a change in that, we have to conform to that. We can't allow unfettered political speech because we have to follow state law. If you want that changed, then you need to talk to your legislators, not us.
Any other questions of staff from the Commission?
For me, thank you.
At this point in time, we'll bring it back to the Commission for motion. I, I, sorry, sir, there's, public hearing's been closed, so no other, no other comments can be heard on this topic.
Question after meeting.
I'm sorry, sir, public hearing's been closed, so I do apologize.
Question after meeting.
You can ans, if you want, sir, we'd be happy to answer your question after the meeting, but unfortunately, because public hearing has been closed on that, on this topic, we can't address any other questions from the floor at this time. I do apologize. That's, so, we'll bring it back to the Commission.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve Amendment ZO-A20001 and to the Prescott Valley Zoning Code, Article 1323, and forward to the town council with the recommendation of approval.
I'll second that. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Mussera?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zurcher?
Yes. Moving on, it is 6:55. Do any of my fellow commissioners need a environmental break? All right. So, moving on, then, and we're going to hear all three of these together, but public hearing items number three and four, and then action item number PDP 19-009, we will be hearing all as one, so I'll read all of them into the record. General Plan Amendment 19-005, upon the application of Jasper Eco Development LLC, a request for a general plan amendment from medium-density residential to community commercial on approximately 11 acres located on the west side of Stillwell Parkway at its intersection with Jasper Drive, approximately 3,800 feet west of the intersection of Granville Fairway and Santa Fe Loop in Prescott Valley. Zoning, item number four, zoning map change 19-014, upon the application of Jasper Eco Development LLC, a request for zoning map change for R1M PAD, residential single-family mixed housing planned area development, to C1PAD, Neighborhood Sales and Services planned area development, on approximately 11 acres located on the west side of Stillwell Parkway at its intersection with Jasper Drive, approximately 3,800 feet west of the intersection of Granville Fairway and Santa Fe Loop in Prescott Valley. And Preliminary Development Plan 19-009, upon the application of Jasper Eco Development LLC, a request for preliminary development plan for a proposed clubhouse facility with commercial uses on approximately 11 acres located on the west side of Stillwell Parkway at its intersection with Jasper Drive, approximately 3,800 feet west of the intersection of Granville Fairway and Santa Fe Loop in Prescott Valley. Presenting is Mr. Richard Parker.
Thank you. You can see the approximately 11-acre site. Perhaps you can't see it because you don't have it on your screen, but you got it in your packet. And that property's been designated as part of the approved master development plan for a clubhouse facility. So, the council is, excuse me, the planning commission is aware, a clubhouse facility would be permitted as a matter of right through the PAD approval and preliminary development plan which took place. The reason why we're looking at amendments to the general plan as well as potential zoning map change is the commercial components that are included in the clubhouse. You have in your packet various illustrations under the PAD. Preliminary development plans are required. This shows the overall layout of the site. I think several of you have toured the Jasper. If you come into the first roundabout, you hang a left, you go up to the next roundabout, and if you climb up a little bit higher, that'll be the pad that's been graded, that's going to be the location of the clubhouse. The parking and all that stuff has been looked at by town staff. This is a preliminary development plan of the building as is proposed. It's quite elaborate, in my opinion, but my opinion doesn't count because I won't be probably utilizing this facility. But, I may be utilizing some of the amenities therein to include a potential bicycle repair facility for people utilizing the trail, potentially a salon to improve the way I look, and other facilities such as a cafe or coffee house that are going to be commercial uses that will be let out to others and involve commercial development. These are, this is a list that's contained in your packet of those components of the clubhouse that are outside previously-approved parameters, and they regard the things that I have described, commercial uses such as- I have described, the commercial uses such as a salon, bike repair, and so forth. This is a pretty cool illustration, elevation. I know that the owner of the project known as Jasper has been very particular about the, you know, the architecture that takes place. I'd really encourage you, or if you'd like to join me sometime, I'll take you around, show you out there. This will be under construction here shortly. I think it's a little under 11,000 square feet, and as you can see, it's rather elaborate in its design and features. Staff recommends approval of the general plan amendment inasmuch as it only affects a very small portion of what ultimately will be developed here as a private clubhouse. You read in your briefing that all other aspects of the clubhouse, pools and private facilities, will not be open to the public. So with added on that basis, staff recommends approval of the general plan amendment, the zoning map change to a commercial designation to be able to accommodate those uses as I've described. And lastly, the PDP has been illustrated before you this evening. I'd respond to questions at your direction, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. I just have a quick question, and I know, just clarifying question again, for more education purposes more than anything. With regard to clubhouses, we see community commercial, I believe that designation is at the Stone Ridge Clubhouse, as well as any clubhouse that has a potential commercial entity in it?
In the case of the Stone Ridge, we went to significant detail to actually define parcels zoning when we did the master development plan. We did some of that here, but I felt uncomfortable when I asked Gary, the planner that was working on this case, to be very focused on those components that were used by the outside public that have commercial intent. He did a good job in laying out some of the aspects of the town's general plan that supports community commercial in the interior of the, of the community, supporting walking communities and all that good stuff that's in our goals and the plan. But I wanted to be clear because, as you pointed out, this can be used by others. In other instances like Granville, there was a property identified for a future clubhouse. The activities in that clubhouse are exclusive to the residents of that community. I've tried to sneak in a couple of times, but because they're exclusive to that community, they are not a commercial use. And so we've determined and I've opined that they are accessory to the principal approved use.
And then, again, I know the reason why, but just for educational purposes, why are we needing to amend the general plan?
Because the general plan doesn't call this out for community commercial uses. And by state law, those uses that are described later by zoning have to be congruent to, not just consistent with the general plan. You know, I'm not, I'm not trying to picket a scab, but we want to make sure we do things right.
Do any other commissioners have any questions of staff? None, and I see Mr. Geese is here.
Well, he shouldn't have to suffer through any.
I mean, I was going to say, if he, if he wants to go through it, he can, but do you have anything else to add? All right.
What flag can I ask? What flag are you going to be flying in front of that thing? Yeah, okay.
Well, he can have a Jasper flag, that's.
He can fly a Jasper flag.
Jasper flag, yes. All right. Any other questions? All right. So at this time, we need three separate motions. So is there a motion to approve General Plan Amendment 19-005?
I'll make the motion to approve GPA 19-005.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Musara?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zercher?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve zoning map change 19-014?
I'll again make that motion to approve ZMC 19-014.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Musara?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zercher?
Yes.
And final one is preliminary, excuse me, preliminary development plan 19-009. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It was a tie, so Charlie Arda, would you, all right. Moved and seconded, all those in favor, excuse me, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Musara?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zercher?
Yes.
All right. Moving on, we'll go back to our original public hearing item number two, which is zoning map change 20-001. You know, I actually realized something. I didn't even open the floor to public comment for Jasper, so I actually just realized that. So we, anybody wanting to address the, you know, the commission on that? That is something I, I ask for, beg for forgiveness on? But, okay. So I didn't even ask anyone from the audience. All right. All right. So zoning map change 20-001, upon the application of Matt Hepperalay, a request for zoning map change from C13, commercial, neighborhood sales and services to RS3, residential and services on approximately one-half acres located at the southwest corner of Spouse Drive and Hoffman Drive in Prescott Valley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Here are four contiguous lots along Spouse Drive. Spouse Drive has been subject of some modifications to the land use fabric, so to speak, based on a plan document that was a specific area plan for the Robert Road and Spouse corridors. It identified some redevelopment opportunities. Redevelopment opportunities are provided for in-state statute as it relates to infill opportunities within a community. And the town's general plan goes in some great length to describe some of those infill opportunities. These properties existed when this phase or unit of Prescott Valley was subdivided, and they were given, as was the case when Yavapai County was given the authorization to do zoning, they were rezoned to a C1 use district. We found over time that because of the development of alternate traffic routes in the town of Prescott Valley, that there weren't many commercial developments that were proposing to go on Spouse Drive. So that was really the basis for ultimately the specific area plan, which again is companion to our town's general plan. Several years ago, the Planning and Zoning Commission initiated on behalf of private property owners the opportunity to rezone several of them to multiple family districts for the purpose of encouraging infill. Upon the commission's recommendation, the council approved it and lo and behold, just a few days later, we started seeing multiple family on Spouse. The proposal now both is congruent to the recommendations of the general plan, but is also continuing a trend for developing apartments in Prescott Valley. The current development comprises three vacant lots that are adjacent to each other, and one house that was built by mistake, actually, because housing is prohibited in C1, but it's currently being utilized as a daycare facility. It's my understanding that this zoning map change would not only remedy that mistake by making inconformance to single-family residents, but it would ultimately be utilized for that purpose, and then the three adjoining lots would be developed with three separate duplexes. Because of the shortage of housing in Prescott Valley and the recommendations of the general plan, town staff, of course, approves, I should say, recommends approval of this action. And I'd respond to questions. Matt is hanging out in the corner over there, if you have any questions of him.
Any questions of staff or the applicant? Any comments from the public? All right. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission. Is there a motion to approve zoning map change 20-001?
I'll make the motion to approve ZMC 20-001.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Musara?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zercher?
Yes.
And our final item this evening is reversionary plat 20-001, a request by Jake Investments LLC for a reversionary plat in order to combine Prescott Valley Unit 16 lots 6728 and 6743 with previously combined lot 6742R located at 5860 North Fulton Drive.
Mr. Chairman, you've got an illustration in the briefing that shows the relationship of these properties to the flood plain. You'll see that they are in the flood plain. As a consequence, they're not developable with anything other than things that can be moved rapidly when the flood comes. It's on that basis that the adjoining properties were zoned P1 a few years ago to support the business on the adjacent property to the south. Proposed now is the ability to add two additional lots to those configured, I think, six lots for storage and parking purposes. If your action is favorable this evening, then subsequent to your action this evening, you'll be looking at a zoning map change to a P1 use district to accommodate parking legally on these properties to support the adjoining commercial use. I'd respond to questions you may have. We recommend approval.
Any questions? Seeing none, any comments from the floor? Seeing none. Bring it back to the commission. Is there a motion to approve reversionary plat 20-001?
I move we approve reversionary plat 20-001.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Musara?
Yes.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zercher?
Yes.
Item number nine, call to the public. Consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. Do we have anyone wishing to address the commission? And I'll just remind, just kind of put this out here, it's not for anything that has been discussed currently this evening.
Got it. Steve Carros, Pronghorn Ranch, C-A-R-O-S. I was hoping the mayor would stay to hear what I have to say. I've worked for three municipalities, the most recent. I left in 2001, town of Payson, Arizona. Been a police officer in all three of those, but quite active with the city councils and so forth. I'm chagrined at some things I've been seeing here since I've moved to Prescott Valley, and I just want to share my feelings because I am astounded at how much that runs throughout the community now. A petition was passed recently, I signed it very quickly, but I was stunned to find that Stone Ridge residents were right behind me, when the petition actually didn't affect them as much. And since that point in time, I've found that the entire community is coming together. And one of the things that is very much on our minds is the planning commission and our perception of the planning commission. And if you have not heard, the perception is you are a rubber stamp for out-of-control development. And there is at least one developer that I have seen his type before, and you all said that you were volunteers for the betterment of the community. That developer has no sense of anything for the betterment of Prescott Valley. So what I'm here, up in front of you, and I have to add this too, there is a perception of a conflict of interest when one of the commissioners is working in the real estate field. I know it's a state matter on conflicts of interest, but that's something I want to put out there as well. And I think that's very much on the minds of people, that things are getting out of control. So my request, and I waited to say these things at the end to be more intimate, if that's possible, but my request is that you truly do what you are saying about being volunteers to the betterment of the community. Because what I'm seeing, we're not too far from a out-of-control development that's going to take our beautiful Prescott Valley and our beautiful state of Arizona and make it something that resembles California. And I, for one, really don't want to see that. I encourage the town of Prescott Valley, and Prescott for that matter, to slow it down, keep an eye on low density, dark night skies and the such-like. I don't know your hearts or minds, but I know the perceptions, and with perceptions come some, some level of truth. And I know darn well what's going on with the one particular developer, and he needs to be stopped. Because if he's allowed to pull off his, his intentions and then run away with all the money he's going to make from it, there are the communities of Viewpoint and Pronghorn Ranch, the county communities of Paquito Valley, Ventura Ranch, Antelope Meadows, and Coyote Springs will all be affected. Our property values will suffer greatly, and that's probably why Stone Ridge and Granville and some others are watching as well. So my, my encouragement is why I'm up here. My encouragement is to follow what I first heard in the meeting, and that is to the betterment of our community. And there are people afoot that are not here for our betterment. So that, that is what I wanted to, to offer you once, once the crowd and emotions were out of the room. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll close call to public and take it to the adjournment of Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned.